2013, will the clerk please call the rule?
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Sam Crawford.
Here.
Kathy Kerschner.
Here.
Bill Knutson.
Here.
Pete Cremon.
Here.
Ken Mann.
Here.
Carl Weimer.
Here. All right, will you all please stand and join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so a couple announcements. First, I'll remind everybody to please check and make sure your cellphone is turned off or on the silent mode. And also, I'll ask that since we've got a pretty full house tonight, that we keep the exits cleared. So if you want to come in and find a seat, there's lots of seats still down in the front middle here. And then if you're handing any paperwork out to the council staff, please give a, or to the council, please give a copy to our staff for the public record as well. So, thank you. All right, from the committee of the whole, we have a strategy planning discussion and positions to be taken regarding collective bargaining per RCW 42.30.140 parentheses four parentheses A. We've got several sets of minutes to approve. Surface water work session for September 17th, 2013, the regular county council for September 24th, 2013, committee of the whole for October 8th, 2013, and the regular county council for October 8th, 2013.
I move approval.
Okay, council member Knutson moves approval. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes seven to zero. We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move right into open session. During open session, audience members will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Before beginning to comment, please state your name and topic of interest for the record. If your last name is something other than Smith or Jones, please spell it for the clerk. Please make sure you speak right into the microphones at either podium. Please stand behind the signs located in the aisles as a courtesy to other speakers. And thank you for your cooperation. So, I'll go ahead and open open session, and we'll start with this side.
Thank you. Lloyd Zimmerman, Ferndale City Councilman, 2234 Main Street. I just wanted to come forward, it's been on my bucket list because I watch you on Channel 10 all the time, and I've known many of you for many years, and I just wanted to acknowledge the great stuff that you do, that the time it takes for your family, and I gave you a small little presentation of some handiwork that I did 24 years ago, and tonight just seemed to be the right time to hopefully honor you with it. The concept here is about leadership, and I can look into each one of your eyes and say that you, you love this county and you do your best to do the best for the people, you know, on different sides of different issues, but I always feel that you're trying to work in our best interests. So, again, I really appreciate, and again, this will be the last meeting that you're all here together. The next meeting will be right around the same time as the election, so you're here as a team, and I still think that you're working on everyone's behalf, and I can only hope that in that time between the election and the first of the year, that something miraculous will happen, and that you will continue to make a really strong mark for future generations here in Waukam County. So again, I acknowledge you and I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Lloyd.
I want to thank you.
Okay, hang on, guys. I, I think some councilors want to make comment. Councilmember Brenner.
What, what was the medium you used?
That's scratch board.
Oh, yeah.
And back in 1989, when I started doing that, remember the thousand points of light? You start with one dot on a black sheet, and it evolved from there. And it's, it's, it tells a story to some people, it doesn't really have a name, but it's about leadership. There's the aspect of intelligence, emotional intuition, and then instinct. The wolf is up at the top there, and each and every one of you has been top of the pack by running, winning your various elections over the years. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. And one more from councilmember Knutson.
Well, I just want to say thank you, and I, I, it's the tribal member, is that anybody in particular?
No, it was the southwest, I was, when I was living in Albuquerque, New Mexico, that was, there was, that was more the look.
It's nobody you know, Bill.
Well, it's just, the face is very.
The names and chains have been protect the innocents.
There, well, it says Zimmerman on the bottom, so, you know, that was.
And if you look on the vase, there's, it's a globe, and you'll see North America, and there's an extra special dot right there where Bellingham should be, so is that a thousand points of light.
I saw the North American went in South America below it.
And Copecelli is that creature who's trying to bring creativity and life to a community, which I think fits all of you folks, try to, what you try to do.
It's beautiful, thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, what a great way to start our open session. All right, and then we'll go to the side. Come on up to the microphone.
My name is Ross Marquardt, and I would like to read to the council, excuse me, some words that you should all recognize. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington. This, of course, is the first part of the oath of office that each of you took, and for those of you on the council who have worked not to support, but to undermine the application in this county of Washington law known as the Growth Management Act, you have wasted countless hours of council time, wasted countless hours of county staff time, wasted tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money working against this law. You members have clearly violated your oath of office multiple times. Knowing this, the only consumable honorable thing to do is to resign. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
My name's Richard Caleb, I live in Birch Bay Village, and I have a lot in Birch Bay Village that I want to put a manufactured home on. The lot was first drawn up in 1966, and at that time, I believe, from what I can figure out, there was a five-foot setback between the back of my lot and Birch Bay Drive. The county keeps telling me that it's now a 35-foot setback, which cuts my lot to about 30, by about 30 percent, and makes it unusable. I would like the county council to kind of look into this, because I don't believe it's, it's just not fair. And also, I believe the lot is vested to have the five-foot setback, and after I looked at the laws, and I'm no lawyer, I feel that I invested, that my lot is vested to have a five-foot setback. All my neighbors' houses, all are set up for five-foot setback. I have some brochures here, Barbara has one, and Carl, or Bill has one. And I got, I could give each one of you a packet here that kind of got the basics of the law, and a drawing of where my house would be, and a Google Earth picture showing where all my neighbors' houses are almost cut in half by the five, 35-foot setback, indicating that there sure as heck wasn't one back when the Phillies was incorporated. And the county told me that, or the planning bureau said, yes, we'll give you your permit, but you must file for variance to get it. And it, I, this feels like it's a bribe, $2,100 for the filing fee, about another $900 to do the paperwork, the drawings and everything, and send out the certified letters. And that just feels like a bribe to me, and so I feel it's unfair, and I would like to see if the council could kind of look into it. I would very much appreciate it. Would anybody like a, one of my little packets to kind of give you some information?
Yes, you can pass, put them up here, and we'll pass them down.
Okay.
Councilmember Brenner has a quick question.
I just wanted to point out Mark Personias, could you raise your hand? You might want to talk to him, because he is the, now, you're the planning, long-range planning manager, yes, and I think he would be very helpful in at least getting people connected, and I'm going to come in with him later in the week.
Okay. Yeah, I just, this, this seems.
You might want to give him a packet.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Greg Brown, Waukam County. I don't think you guys need to resign.
Oh, oh, can I ask that, yeah, he's taking care of it.
That's all right.
All right.
He'll figure it out. AB 2013-332, EDI money and multiple family home construction. You should have heard your conversation today. Started out with no connection between EDI funding and financing home development, moved to, let's include rentals, and then do what we, what do we do at the end of the 20-year payback? The vote ended up two to one, approval. What happened to the no nexus at the beginning between EDI and the financing of homes? We fight all the time where our EDI money goes. I agree with Councilman Crawford's no vote. I believe the EDI money is for infrastructure, for public utilities, and other projects that benefit to the whole community. Some argue that this would provide jobs. There we go again, having public money being spent by our government to provide jobs for a few for a short period. Why not look at reducing some of the regulation and penalties to the private sector who can provide these homes? Please do not move ahead to modify the CDI guidelines. My next comment is the contract between the flood zone and Puget Sound Partnership. I commented today.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, could you ask them to take their conversation out? I'm having a hard time hearing.
I'm sorry, I was going to let Greg finish. Mark and Rick, can you take your conversation out into the foyer so everyone can hear the speaker? Thank you.
No, I'll.
Thank you, Councilmember Crawford.
I'll finish quickly. I pointed out today that free money through the Puget Sound Partnerships comes with strings attached at a minimum. The county staff spokesperson spoke, told us how many agencies would be represented on this SWIFT group, and then proceeded to tell us how the Puget Sound Partnership wanted things to proceed. Provide money and sit at the table. I did not hear her name any direct public representation on this list. Some of the committee point out that this levy work is something that the county needs to do anyway, so why not, so why not use others' money? When will we start to pay for our own way, and then be able to control the methods and means? Please vote no to authorize this contract. Please let our county and our local representatives be in charge without necessary bought and paid for influence. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in open session? All right, seeing none, I'll close the open session, and we'll move into our Finance and Administrative Services Committee, Councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In our committee today, we had seven items on the consent agenda. All seven items passed with a three-zero recommendation for approval. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Any discussion on the consent agenda items? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes seven to zero.
Continuing on with the finance committee, under other items, the first one was an ordinance amending the Waukam County budget, the 12th request in the amount of $1,488,730. This had a three-zero recommendation for approval in committee, and I move approval, and I just want to point out that $600,000 of this money is to go towards medical expenses for two suspects during a pursuit and an apprehension, and that money will be reimbursed to us by a different entity down the road.
All right, councilmember Brenner.
I'm going to speak against the budget request for two, numbers two and number four, the part to appropriate $300,000 to fund EDI grant for West Bakerview Overpass Project. If, if it's already been done, there's no reason for us to pay for it after the fact. We get told this a lot, I, you know, we were told that that, the overpass improvements would improve the overpass. Not only is it not improving the overpass presently, and it's about done, but as these overpass improvements were proceeding, the hotels were being built, the other things were being done, and this doesn't even take into account any potential future huge place that might locate there. So, I think when they get done with this, and I said, my example this morning was, if I take my car to a mechanic and it comes back in the same or worse condition, should I have to pay the mechanic? And I don't think so, if the mechanic tells me ahead of time it's going to improve it. So, and I'm not picking on mechanics, I thank God we have mechanics, so, it's not that, it was just the first thing that came to my mind today. The other one was number four, to appropriate $400,000 to, to fund inventory purchase of road oil. The main reason for the road oil is all the chip seal that the county does, and I said this morning, I'm not an expert, but I have spoken to experts about this. The county, I believe, is using chip seal way too often in areas that don't need it. And this isn't the first time I've spoken against so much of the chip seal that we're doing, but we did have a former member on the county council who was a, an employee of the State Department of Transportation. When he retired, he managed a gravel pit, and he was pretty much an expert, plus I've talked to other people in the business, who don't, you know, who think it, sometimes it doesn't look like there's a good reason why we're putting chip seal in certain places. Since we don't have any right to say where the chip seal goes once it's all approved, this is the only bite we get at this, so I can't support it.
Okay, I just want to make sure, councilmember Mann, did you move this for approval?
Yep.
Okay.
I, I, and.
Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, I just want to address the items. We discussed Ms. Brenner's concerns in committee today. The 300,000, I, the mechanic analogy isn't very, doesn't work for me, I don't think it's very accurate. Basically, this is a commitment that we entered into with other entities, and the work has been performed, this is our debt, and we have to pay it, and that's why I will support that. And the 400,000 for the chip seal, I, I don't like chip seal any more than you do, and I'm looking forward to the expert presentation that you're going to schedule in your committee. As of now, this, this 400,000 is as much about some of the other cities that we subcontract, or we are the purchasing agent for, basically, so we can buy in bulk and save money. So, again, you know, I, I understand your hostility towards chip seal, but I'm not sure this is the appropriate way to, to hold that up. But I am looking forward to the presentation.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? All right, will the clerk please call the rule?
Barbara Brenner.
No.
Sam Crawford.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
Bill Knutson.
Yes.
Pete Cremon.
Yes.
Ken Mann.
Yes.
Carl Weimer.
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one, with councilmember Brenner opposed?
Item, sorry.
Nope, you're good.
Item number two is a resolution amending the 2013 Waukam County Flood Control Zone District budget, the fourth request in the amount of $8,000. We held this one in committee, because we want our staff to connect with, with the joint board and see if they can take on some of the burden of this cost. It's not a huge cost, but it is a, it's an important message that we believe they should be supporting the, the planning unit. So we held that in committee, and I don't think that requires a vote, I just wanted to explain to folks why, why I skipped over it and it's on.
Councilmember Brenner?
Yeah, and it was held. My concern is, is different. This was what happened in the plant, the joint board, I think before we even had this planning unit thing completely together. So, it does create an, an impression that the joint board has disdain for the planning unit. I don't think that's helpful. But also, I did request Chris Bruski from Public Works to come back to us with a list of how much money is being spent on staff time to service the joint board. This is very, a very small amount, and the fact that they cut it back by, what, a quarter or more, a third, before it even started, seems, it seems like they're treating themselves and the joint board very differently than they're treating the planning unit. I think both of those organizations are valid, and they should get equal respect.
All right, item number three, councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number three is a resolution approving a salary schedule and policies for unrepresented Waukam County employees effective January 1st, 2014. We recommended this three to zero in committee, and I move approval.
All right, is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Item number four is authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between the County Flood Control Zone District and the Puget Sound Partnership to develop a system-wide improvement framework to address deficiencies identified for the Nooksack River levies by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in the amount of $300,000. This will be as the council, the council will be acting as the Waukam County Flood Control District Board of Supervisors. We recommended this three to zero in committee. I move approval to the board.
All right, councilmember Brenner?
Well, I, I hope I'm not the only one speaking to this. I'm going to support this, because while I agree with Greg Brown's concerns, to me, I see this as a starting place, and it doesn't mean that we, at the end of this part, have to do anything except take the information and process it in our own process. This is a start. Maybe, maybe the concerns will be for not, and everything will turn out fine, and we'll get very objective information. I'm, let's see, I hope, but I don't know that that will necessarily happen, but I do know it's a starting point, and I don't mind spending their money on a starting point.
Okay, well, I'll just speak to this. I'm going to support this, and the reason is because we have a situation where our levies that protect the rest of the county from flooding, we've spent a lot of money building them up, and in the Pacific Northwest, there's evidence that having trees on levies can be beneficial to holding the levy. And the Army Corps of Engineers nationally came out with a standard that said, we will not provide insurance if, or we won't insure these levies if they have vegetation growing on them, which makes it very difficult in Waukam County, because we've found that having vegetation, vegetated levies is beneficial. So, this money is money that will go towards working out a solution to that, so that we can keep our levies vegetated if necessary and beneficial, and also still remain in the FEMA flood program. So that's why I'm supporting that. Any other comments? All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes seven to zero. And number five?
Number five is discussion and possible action on the Economic Development Investment Program, the EDI board recommendation to modify guidelines to add single and multifamily home construction as an allowable use. We talked about this quite a bit in committee, and we did move approval, or we did recommend approval two to one of the policy change, and we, we just made it very clear to the executive that we want a thorough review of the inter-local agreement. We have some concerns about the details, and we laid those out today, and we discussed them at length, so I, I move approval.
Councilmember Brenner?
Well, I went back and forth in committee. Since then, I read that letter from John Harmon, which was actually a letter from David Stahlheim, representing the city, and I got to say, these weren't, not the issues we brought up, but there's three, three issues here, I think, that are also extremely valid issues of concern, and that there's not support for it the way it is. I remember when I read it, about the 80 percent of the median income, and I thought, whoa, that's affordable housing for people who need subsidies? And I was kind of shocked, and, but I thought, you know, maybe it's just me. And then, it does, yeah, he, they include that as one of their concerns, that they talk about doing it for 60 percent, not 80 percent. 60 percent maybe, but that's even a little high, but maybe, but this, we have to remember one thing, this, the, the associated costs of the permits and all that still comes out of the taxpayers, you know, that's out of all our pockets, and this seems a little broad for affordable housing to me. So, I'm not comfortable with it the way it is, and I hear what you said, that they need to come back to it. I think we should make a little more, I'd like to hold it. I think we should make a little more of an effort to put some parameters in this that goes into their discussion. That's what I would like. So, and, and the one that I brought up in committee was, I have a real problem with us just saying, okay, good idea, and then we don't have any say-so in where the housing goes, how much, whatever, whether it's appropriate, or is it just in the benefit of the person applying for it? And that scares me. Rather, I want people who need this and who, that would help them, be the people who benefit, not the people who are making the application. And I feel we got burned pretty bad on an application on another thing, and, and so I'm really nervous about this one.
So are you making a motion to hold this?
Okay.
Or move it into a different committee?
About Public Works. Oh, I move to hold this and move it into Public Works.
Is that the right motion, Dana?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Brenner wants to hold action on this item tonight.
And move it into Public Works.
And move it into Public Works for discussion?
Sure, you can do that. Okay.
Okay, and we vote on that now? All right, do you want to make that motion before councilmember Crawford has an opportunity?
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Cremon?
I agree with councilmember Brenner that we, we should hold this. I think there needs to be more work done on it, more scrutiny, and we did get a significant amount of, of input just within the last 24 hours. So I think it's prudent and appropriate to hold this, but I do, I fail to see the correlation with this issue and Public Works. Other than the three people that sit on that particular committee, including myself, are extremely concerned about this issue, but I think it's more, you know, we're talking about EDI funds, I think it's more appropriate for it to be in finance, and it would also give, you know, finance is generally more well-attended than, and there's usually more staff present as well. So I think.
I'm going to amend my motion to, to hold in committee and have another discussion in finance. I'm.
I, I would love to host this discussion in finance.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, councilmember Brenner, that is very, very generous of you.
All right, so I believe we have to vote on this before taking any discussion or any more discussion, so the motion is to hold this and bring it up for discussion in the finance committee. Is there a date or a time, or do you want to be specific?
No.
Okay, it'll be worked out between the clerk and the finance committee chair?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes seven. passes seven to zero.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Brenner and Councilmember Mann. All right, moving on to, we've got an item from Public Works Health and Safety Committee. Councilmember Brenner?
We discussed the resolution approving the Columbia Valley Water District 2013 Water System Comprehensive Plan Update, and it received approval from everybody, including the Health Department. So, the recommendation was three, zero, to recommend approval to the county council, and I so moved.
All right, is there any further discussion on that item? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Item number seven, Councilmember Brenner?
This was the resolution to consider vacating a portion of Glendale Drive per state law and Waccaum County Code. And what this, wait, no, I didn't want to go into all the detail. This would start the process to allow the Public Works staff to bring forward a study and recommendation to the council. And I think it was, yeah, it was a three to zero vote to move ahead with that.
Two, one.
What?
Two, one.
I voted against it?
No, he voted against it.
Oh, you did. Okay. I didn't vote against it. Okay, two to one to do this. That doesn't mean I support it in the end. It just means I don't mind getting the information. The people went through the process they're supposed to go through to get this moved to this point. And I'm okay with that. My only concern, and I brought it up, and Joe Rutan was here for Public Works, he didn't have the answer. And that was, if we vacate a county right-of-way, can we still retain the ability to put in a stormwater facility in that vacated right-of-way if we need it in the future? That's my big concern. We're giving up all these rights-of-way, which include for stormwater facilities. And we're getting hit harder and harder by the state and feds about doing stormwater facilities, and we need to have these areas. So, I'm not sure what the answer to that is. So, I'd like to at least wait for that. So, there you have it. We recommended two to one to approve this.
So, you're making a motion to approve or making a motion to wait?
Making a motion to approve, to let them bring forward all the information.
Okay. Councilmember Mann?
So, I'm not committed to, to my no vote. I just kind of wanted to comment on it and see what you, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, you know. It, I thought from our discussion today, we learned that most of what these, the citizens expressed an interest in doing on this property, they could already do on the property without going through the vacation process, and that we could maybe save them some time and the county some time and, and staff time, and maybe even save these folks the $800 application fee by just telling them, "Look, you can already garden on that piece of property. You can already have, you know, a non-attached structure there." So, that was my understanding of what Joe said today, but maybe I misunderstood.
Councilmember Brenner?
Well, that was sort of half of what was said, but the, the bottom line is, if they wanted to put anything permanently there, they can't do that. They can put temporary things in that area. I thought it was interesting that they were talking about how it's in such bad shape and, and it needs cleaning up and all that. They can do that right now. A right-of-way is not ownership. It's an easement over the property that's already owned by those people. So, they can, if they're worried about that, they can do that. That's what, you know, I don't know that that's their, maybe they want to do something permanent there. My question is, if they do something permanent there, how do we end up being able to do a stormwater facility in the future if there's something permanent there?
Yeah, that's a great question.
So, yeah, and Joe couldn't answer it. So, I'm, you know, I'd go either way on this. If we want to hold it, I can do that. Or if we want to move ahead. They said, they prefer we move ahead so they can bring us all the information we need.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yeah, and, and you don't, I don't know, I apologize that I wasn't at the meeting today, but you don't do this for gardening purposes. This is, this is a significant thing. I, that said, on the face of it, based on what I see, I support it. It's, I assume it's meeting right in the middle, between the two neighbors. Yeah, that's usually the way these are done. And there will never be a road there. I, you know, in terms of the stormwater issue, that should be part of Public Works analysis that they'll bring forward. But the people have paid the fee. They want the land. We're obviously, or at least it's obvious to me, never going to have a road there. So, let's let the process carry through. I, I fully support letting the Public Works Department go ahead with this.
So, they've already paid the fee?
Yes, they've paid $790.
Okay, so they don't get that money back if we don't do the investigation?
I don't know. No, actually, you get a portion. I did this once where there was a portion that was refunded.
We don't have anybody from Public Works.
Yeah, you get a portion back because they, without doing the research, they haven't spent all the money. But they won't get all of it back at this point.
Oh, okay. I thought they would get the $790 back. Okay.
Councilmember Brenner?
Well, I just want to make it very clear. A right-of-way vacation isn't just about roads. It's about using it for county purposes, which would include stormwater facilities. So, whether or not there'd ever be a road there doesn't change my concern about whether we might want a stormwater facility there. And we won't know that until we get information about the flow and, and, you know, what's in that area.
So, you're supporting it, right?
I'm supporting moving forward.
Good, okay.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that moves forward seven to zero. That passes seven to zero. And other items? We have one item from the Planning and Development Committee, Councilmember Knutson.
Yes, we had an ordinance amending Waccaum County Code Title 20, zoning to correct errors and provide clarification. It passed with a three, zero recommendation, and I move approval.
All right, Councilmember Crawford?
Being one of the council representatives on this committee who attended more than one meeting, I think it was, Mr. Mann.
Oh.
This was, yeah, this, it was, I'm sure Mr. Mann will agree with all of his participation in this, that this was a difficult process because we were walking a tightrope between trying to do some, what were hopefully practical changes, and not doing things that really substantially changed the outcome necessarily based on the, what was trying to be achieved through our land use regulations, but simply to make them, well, to make them simpler. And it's difficult because our layered regulations don't allow for much simplification. So, I, I think what has, what we have managed to accomplish in this group is good. But it's a lot of work, and to me, in the end, it kind of shows how difficult and challenging it is to deal with Title 20 overall, which was the reason why this was started. But here you have it. I encourage you to support it. And any additional efforts that the executive wants to put forward, because he is the one that initiated this, to try to make these regulations a little easier, I'm all ears.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your work on that. I know it was a long process. Any other discussion on that item?
The other person, oh, one more. The other person is Gary Davis. You know, he, he's easy, he is constantly the subject of accolades because he's a good guy and he does good work. And, and this is another example where he took a very challenging thing. I don't really understand how Gary can spend the amount of time he does to do this because the amount of work he was accomplishing between meetings was pretty phenomenal, going through a very difficult process. So, I, I think we would be remiss without acknowledging his hard work on this and, and his, somehow, the way he manages to get these kinds of projects done is pretty tremendous.
Councilmember Brenner?
And the Planning Commission. They worked on it too. So, and they brought it forward with a recommendation. There was a lot of involvement by a lot of different places.
A lot of, a lot of eyeballs looked at this.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Seeing no further comments, will the clerk please call the rule?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Bill Knutson?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And we have one more item. It's nomination and appointment of one council member to serve as the WASAC Legislative Steering Committee designee for 2014. And I, I will nominate Councilmember Cremmon to continue serving in that capacity because I believe he's doing a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Councilmember Crawford?
I'll, I'll bring it up in our other business.
All right. All right. So, all those in favor of Councilmember Cremmon, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thanks, Councilmember Cremmon. And then we've got resolution establishing regular Waccaum County Council meeting dates for 2014.
I'll move approval.
Here we go.
Councilmember Crawford moves approval. Councilmember Brenner wants them every week. Okay, let's vote. No.
Well, I either want them every week, or every first and third, or every second and fourth. Right now, it's like, it's always been this way since we went to this schedule. It's every other week except when it's not. I don't think that's in the public interest because when we don't even know sometimes when our meetings are, it's not very fair to expect that the public can know. And, and this wouldn't be as easy for me either, but I think it's, I just think it's a better schedule to allow for the most public input. And so, my motion, first I'll try, I move that we meet every week, every Tuesday, which we used to do.
Madam Chair, there's already a motion on the floor.
Well, doesn't my amendment supersede that?
You're moving to amend?
I'm moving to amend, yes.
Okay. So, you've got a motion to amend that the council meets every week. All right, seeing no discussion on that item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No. I voted twice accidentally. I was, I meant to vote no.
All right, let's vote again.
This must have every got, this is good.
I don't know who voted which way.
That is-
Who said aye?
Bill.
Madam Chair.
You meant to say aye.
You know-
Come on.
Okay, wait a second.
I, I apologize, but I was expecting Councilmember Brenner to say something that she says every year. And I think what I heard, your motion, your, was not what I was expecting.
To meet 52 times.
You want to meet every year, every week.
Except for holidays.
Except for holidays.
Well, except for holidays in August, you know, the, the same holidays. But every week except for those times of the year.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sorry.
I thought you wanted, usually it's every, you, you want to have it on the-
First and third, I'll try those names.
So, that's what I was expecting.
Okay, so, back to the vote. We're going to take the vote again. So, everybody's clear on the motion. Councilmember Brenner wants to meet every week except for holidays.
Yes.
All right. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, that fails one to six.
You know, when I realized it was every week.
Okay.
I thought I was making progress.
Councilmember Brenner?
All right. I will, just so I don't give, take up all this time, I move that we meet every first and third Tuesday, or every second and fourth Tuesday except for holidays. And you guys can work that out after it. I just don't want to do three motions.
So, your motion is to set a regular schedule?
Yes, that kind of regular, not regular like this is. It says, resolution establishing regular meeting days, but I-
So, just so the public knows, let's talk a little bit about that. This schedule gets set up. And, and I'm going to ask our clerk, when you put this schedule together, what kind of things do you have to consider?
I have my little list here.
Okay.
And try not to have a meeting after a holiday Monday so that the office is not closed, so people want to come in and look at files or whatever their, the day before a council meeting. And they can still do that if I don't have it scheduled right after a holiday. And starting off the year after the oath of office ceremony, which is set up in the charter, so we, it's the first Tuesday after the second Monday in January. So, we start the year off then. And NACO conference in March, don't meet on Election Day, and try not to meet the Fourth of July week. So, those are the things we look at every year.
And the charter?
And anything that's in the charter, correct.
And the charter says we have to meet-
22 times a year.
22 times a year.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Brenner?
Well, charter, you, I mean, it allowed us to meet every week except, well, almost every week. Almost, except when there was holidays and things like that. We did, we met every Tuesday.
When I first started working for the council office in 1991, we met the first, second, and fourth Tuesdays of the month. So, we've never met. Well, since I've been here, we've never met every Tuesday.
Okay, that'll be my motion, first, second, and fourth Tuesday of the month. How's that? So, you're not going to move the last?
Nope.
I'll do that.
So, you're removing the last one and moving first, second, fourth Tuesday of every month?
I like that better.
And so, I'll just remind you that we do meet practically every week because on the alternate weeks, we have surface water work session and-
During the day-
The Board of Health.
We have those during the day when people are working. We don't have evening meetings. And I just think it's good public policy to have, you know-
Lots of meetings?
More meetings and have them on, when people can say, "Is this the sec, first, second, or fourth?" Rather than, "Let's see, is this the other Tuesday except when we're not going to meet on?" So, yeah, I think it's very confusing for us, so it's confusing for the public. I've heard council members say, "Do we have a meeting next week?"
Okay. All those in favor of Councilmember Brenner's motion to hold meetings on the first, second, and fourth Tuesdays of the month, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, that fails six to one. Councilmember Brenner is in favor.
All right, I won't give any more pain. I'm just going to vote no.
Okay, so, we have a motion to, do we have a motion to accept the dates that were in our packet?
Yeah, Sam moved it.
Okay, Councilmember Crawford moved it. All right, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, that passes six to one with Councilmember Brenner opposed. All right, we are on our introduction items. We've got items one through six. There were no changes to that, I believe. So, is there a motion to accept the introduction items, one through six? Councilmember Mann moves to accept the items. Is there any discussion on this?
Did you note the substitute on that first item?
And noting the substitute for item number one is the blue pages that we got, updated 2014 ACP with add-in line 11 from the committee discussion this afternoon. And that's regarding the resolution adopting the Waccaum County 2014 Annual Road Construction Program. All right, all those in favor of accepting these items, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes seven to zero. And other business, councilmembers with other business, Councilmember Brenner?
Yeah, we also in Public Works had a discussion of the annual construction program for 2014. And I'm not sure why it's not on our agenda too. Some things just come through Public Works Committee and don't have to come to the council, but I thought-
They got introduced.
Oh, introduced.
We just approved it for two weeks.
Right. What?
We just approved it to be introduced for two weeks.
Okay, we approved it. But I wanted to make you aware, there was a change that we made, and it was number nine.
Is that line 11?
Line 11, yeah.
That's what we just, we just went over that, and we approved that changed and approved to introduce it.
I was talking, sorry. Oh, okay.
So, we're good. You're good. Councilmember Crawford?
Well, I was just going to say something when we nominated it and voted for Councilmember Cremmon to be the-
All the introduction items, that's why.
The latest committee.
You didn't vote? Oh, oh, you did vote. You're talking about something else.
I was going to say, and then I said I would say it under other business, that I think, you know, it's been, with all due respect to Councilmember Kerschner, who did represent us at, you know, to some degree, or to-
One year.
A full degree, yeah, and did a good job of it. But I just find my colleague, Councilmember Cremmon, to be just really the right person in the right place at the right time, both here in the council and also from what I know of his personal life, to, to be able to spend the time and to do a yeoman's job on behalf of the Waccaum County Council in that role. And it is my hope that as we look at, you know, things such as accommodating expense reimbursement and that sort of thing going into 2014, that as much as Councilmember Cremmon is able to pursue that, both with the state and with the National Association of Counties, I, I just wanted to voice my support for that.
Good. And I, I would second that. I would support that as well. So, something we need to look at. Councilmember Brenner?
And I apologize. I was talking to Councilmember Cremmon, and I didn't hear what you had said. And I apologize, I was talking to Councilmember Cremon, and I didn't hear what you had said. When you said the amended version, did you say what it was?
I sure did.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
I said it was under the blue, what you're looking at right there.
Right, but did you mention the change we made?
No, did you want to mention it?
Yeah, that was the whole purpose of what I was saying. It had, it had said it was the Slater Road-Northwest Road intersection, and what we, what we felt in committee was that you don't want to make those improvements at that intersection without knowing if we're going to have a four-way deal or a three-way deal, and so that it's really important that we get started on the Slater Road connector evaluation to make that determination, so that we don't do something now and then have to do something again in a few years if we, it was, the card before, it seemed like it was in the wrong sequence, so we changed it to do the connector issue itself before we determined what we're going to do about that intersection.
Okay, thank you. Any other business? All right, are there reports from, or other items from councilmembers? Councilmember Wymer, Knutson, Mann? I have nothing to report. Have a safe and happy Halloween. Councilmember Brenner?
Just one thing, I did attend the planning unit meeting, and it was very differently done this time than the other time. And as Councilmember Cremon said, I think it was because some of us did make comments about it before, and I felt the facilitators this time did a very good job of keeping it on, pretty much on track, and I thought it was well done. And I was the biggest complainer about the first meeting, so one of the biggest.
Councilmember Cremon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I have to report is that about a week or so ago, the Association of Counties for Washington State held a meeting dealing with exempt wells. And we actually have someone here in the audience who actually drove down to the meeting. It was not just members representing the various counties of the state. There were representatives from the tribes, there were representatives from Department of Ecology, et cetera. It was a, it was a robust discussion. It was a at least two-hour meeting. I attended by conference call, and as Councilmember Crawford pointed out, you know, we have a limited budget, and I think I would be able to be more effective by being there in person, although I, maybe Mr. Brown can verify this, that I did speak my mind and was pretty firm in my belief that the counties of this state are under siege, and this is an issue that is very important to every county in Washington State and thousands, literally thousands of landowners. And I'm going to stay on top of this issue. We have another meeting coming up in the not-too-distant future, and it's going to be a high priority for the association. And in fact, Chair Kerschner can also verify that just today, Councilmember Kerschner and I had a meeting with the executive talking about legislative priorities for the upcoming year, and two of the high priority issues, one of the two happens to be exempt wells. And so I'm committed to representing the county as best I can in a robust way and a very active way, and hopefully we'll be able to prevail and protect property rights for thousands of citizens. And so I just wanted to let you know that that meeting was well-attended, there was a long and robust discussion, nothing was resolved, but I think there's going to be a lot of, it's going to be a very major issue in the upcoming session, and I just would like to let you know that I am ready, willing, and able to do the best I can to represent Wacken County and its citizens regarding that issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Cremon? Any other business?
I don't have, yeah, I don't have a report, but I do, I forgot on other business, and I see our auditor is here, and I just wanted to ask you a question if you wouldn't mind. I got a call today from someone who said they did not get their ballot yet, and since we're, you guys haven't gotten yours, so since, didn't they mail out like Friday or something?
They, they were dropped from the, you know, mailer on Friday, but now all of the mail has to go through Seattle rather than Everett.
Oh, so it takes longer now?
So it's a little bit longer. I got mine finally today. I was checking each day. And I know a number of the rural county areas of people I talked to today had gotten theirs yesterday, so I'm guessing that everybody should have them tomorrow. But I certainly will be giving the feedback to the post office what I think of their delivery now.
Okay, so you're aware that it's going out slower than usual?
Right.
Because usually it was like the next day or two days.
Yeah, usually when it goes on Friday, we would drop it in Everett, would be, some of the people would get it Saturday, and the rest of us got it Monday.
Right.
And, and even into the first part of this year on our special elections, that was the case.
Okay.
But for some reason, this one is not going there, and we'll be talking to them.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Councilmember Cremon?
Thank you. I appreciate your indulgence, but, you know, this is televised, and a lot of our citizens get an opportunity to see the council in action. And I just want to give a reminder that, I mean, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news or something negative, but October 31st is approaching, and this is the last meeting we have before October 31st, and that's when our second half property taxes are due, isn't it?
Yes.
And, and I just want to make sure that some people, including myself, sometimes forget that we have to get those property taxes in, and I just want to give a friendly reminder that you have until October 31st to get those property taxes in without receiving a penalty. And I can tell you in all the years that I've been involved in county government, year after year, there's always a few individuals who are just one day late, and they, the treasurer has no leeway in, in making any kind of exception. So if you are one day late, you're going to receive a significant penalty. I remember one time, there was, it was, the penalty was, the penalty was $40,000. So it happened to be Georgia Pacific didn't get their, didn't get their taxes in on time, but, but I just wanted to let the-
We saw what happened to them.
Yeah. So just a friendly reminder to get those taxes in if you haven't already.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, seeing no other business or announcements, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks.